Okay, good evening, folks. We're gonna call the meeting to order of the Southern Town Granville Regional School Committee at 6:01 PM. I thank the committee members for joining us off-cycle here. We've got two important topics to approve this evening. I promise not to keep you very long from your families. We do have an abbreviated agenda that we're gonna go through. First, just a reminder, Amy did send out... Where we going with?
Sorry about that. I didn't know if you wanted to remind audience members about public comment.
Sure. So if you would like to make a public comment this evening, please submit your public comment to the superintendent@stgrsd.org. Email address, make sure that your name and residential address is included in your email so that it can be read as part of this meeting tonight, either as part of the first or second public comment. Okay, so war articles were sent home by email by Amy today. Please make sure you sign them. There's a total of five. Make sure you sign off on them and return them. At this point, I will accept a motion to accept the secretary's report dated 11/17/2020.
So moved?
Second.
Anybody have any questions or comments on those meeting minutes? I will do a roll call vote to accept the meeting minutes. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes. Motion passes 7:00. Okay, moving on to our first public comment. Amy, if you would check the superintendent's account and see what we have for public comments this evening.
Okay, Chairman Hull, we do have some public comments, and to spare everyone the scratchiness of my gravelly voice, I've arranged for a text-to-speech recording, which I will play now.
The first public comment is from Jennifer Durfee, Granville, Massachusetts. Dear Superintendent Willard and school committee members, the Durfee family wanted to reach out to you concerning the Rams hockey team as our son Noah Durfee is a senior this year. We, as a family, do not take the coronavirus lightly and appreciate all the effort you and the school committee are taking to keep our kids and staff safe. But we really hope that you take a good look at hockey and realize how safe it is to play right now. We currently have two children who have been playing out of Amelia Park Ice Arena in U18 and Pee Wee 12 leagues. There has been a huge effort at all the rinks, and they take every precaution they can that has made us as parents feel very safe for our children to play. The rinks are limiting number of spectators, not using the lockers room, so the kids have to be spaced out while getting ready. Coaches and refs have been very strict about the mask rule, and there have been no cases of COVID-19 at any of the rinks or on the teams we play for. Like we said before, this is our son Noah's senior year, and he has been with this team from the start. He has put in the time, getting up at 5:00 AM to practice before school and sacrificing time with friends and family for games, practices, film, and meetings. But he did it all for the love of his hockey family and the game they all love so much. We, as parents, are very proud and understand that we need to be safe and feel that we can by moving forward. Noah will never have this opportunity again to play with his teammates or be on the ice with his younger brother who is moving up to JV this year. It's his last chance to earn a captain or alternate patch on his jersey. He has worked so hard for this, and the missed opportunity outweighs the little risk. Thank you. Go Rams! The next public comment is from Aiden Jobb, Southwick, Massachusetts. This is Aiden Jobb's student athlete, hockey, in 11th grade from SRS. I am writing to you today in regards to winter sports and how they are necessary to people like me and my teammates. With the current global situation going on, I understand that lives are filled with stress and anxiety, and I am not here to put any more on you. I would just like to mention and let you know some facts/statistics about athletics during the pandemic. Myself along with many other student athletes, not only in the hockey program but winter sports as a whole need our season. Many athletes from all over who are being prevented from playing sports they love have fallen into a depression as they are taken away from sports. The programs were not only a place for us to showcase our abilities, but although it sounds cliché, escape from our problems and find true happiness. Sports for me and my teammates were our main source of joy. This upcoming March will be one entire year of lockdown separated from our friends. We cannot take this any longer. Shutting down our lives is simply not healthy. I can speak on behalf of our students and student athletes that a season is critical for our lives. Many of us don't seek futures in academics rather athletics and simply need the season as much, if not more than others need school. Many safe guidelines have been put in place by the state, private buildings, and sports teams to ensure our safety. Since August, me and 14 other student athletes have played hockey against multiple teams and players from New York, New Hampshire, Connecticut, and Ma. Our cautious and responsible team with assistance from adults, the state itself, and local businesses such as Amelia Park Ice Arena saw zero cases. Not only our team but every single team in Western Massachusetts. With upcoming decisions regarding winter sports, I am begging you to please let us play. I need this, my teammates need this, and our school needs this. Thank you for your time. The next one is from Noah Durfee, Granville, Massachusetts. Dear Superintendent Willard, this year as it's my senior year, I understand the protocols and risks of COVID-19 and as me and fellow high school peers have. Senior. Dear Superintendent Willard, this year as it's my senior year, I understand the protocols and risks of COVID-19 and as me and fellow high school peers have been playing under these protocols and risks for months now, I feel 100% comfortable with how things are being run and can hopefully continue to run with zero confirmed cases at our rinks and teams. I feel like as long as we all continue to abide by the rules and keep ourselves safe, there should be absolutely no reason Evan Teagan and I shouldn't be able to play our last supposed to be memorable season of high school hockey. It may not seem like a big deal to you, but to us it's so much more than just a sport, and we have put hours and hours and sweat and tears into the sport, and a senior year of high school hockey is worth every precaution and safety measures we as a team have been practicing for months. I hope you can consider the thoughts of us and at least attempt a season as we can practice every aspect of protocols to our fullest to protect ourselves and others. Thank you. Number 23, Noah Durfee. The next one is from Evan Iglesias, Southwick, Massachusetts. Hello, Mrs. Willard. This is addressed to and all of the school board committee. Personally, you may not know me, but my name is Evan Iglesias, and for the past three years I have been the assistant captain for our high school hockey team. This year I was hopeful to become captain, but such as my fall sports soccer, this season might be taken from me too. This season is very important as it's my last year in front of scouts for junior and college level teams. Before hockey shut down in Massachusetts, there was 108 cases leading back to hockey out of around 69,000 players, coaches, and officials registered. That is a 0.0015%. A lot of these cases have come from tournaments where teams would go out of state and parents would socialize and then bring it back home with them. Since then, USA Hockey has banned traveling out of state to play another team. They also have added a one colon one spectator rule, limiting the amount of people inside the arena at a time, therefore being able to socially distance more. Players have to wear masks at all times, entering the rink, on the ice, and on the way out. Players also have to get almost completely dressed at home prior to the game to reduce time idle in an area. I was able to play 15 and counting, all in Massachusetts, without a single COVID case on our team following these guidelines. Our high school team is fully aware of these guidelines and are 100% positive that we will follow them in order for us to have a season. Lastly, I would like you to look at hockey's numbers in just Western Mass as they are way lower than every other district and that those districts do not affect us because we only play teams in our district. Thank you for your time, and I'd love to answer any questions you have regarding the topic. Thank you. The next one is from John Lacy, Southwick, Massachusetts. Hello, Mrs. Willard. You may not personally know me, but I'm John Lacy. I play for the high school's hockey team and would just like to reach out. I understand that there is issues with playing sports during the pandemic, but I believe that with the proper guidelines, we could be able to play hockey without any complications. Over the past few months, I have been playing on a hockey team in Westfield. We played around 15 games from teams all over the Massachusetts area. In those 15 games and 30 practices, not one player on our team contracted COVID. The guidelines that they have put into place to safely play hockey work, I can assure you we are all willing to play under these new guidelines. I understand that with the COVID numbers rising, it may be easy for you to just cancel the season altogether, but with limiting spectators, playing with masks, eliminating hitting, and limiting corner plays, it can be very safe with little to no time close with another player. The final thing I wanted to say was I know that one or two of the seniors really need the season to show junior and college teams what they have. They need the season to probe to them that they can play at the next level. Thank you for your time. Just please look at all the possibilities before making your final decision. Thank you. The next public comment is from Tommy Wally, Southwick, Massachusetts. Hi, I feel we should have an ice hockey season this year for our school. I feel this way because we and many others have had hockey in other places while following protocol due to COVID, and it has been going well. We are willing to follow any rules it takes to have our season. Thank you. The next one is from Ian Lemieux, Southwick, Massachusetts. Greetings, Mrs. Willard. I am a little late to this email due to a phone update, but concerning hockey season, I would love for hockey to continue this year. This is my last year playing hockey, and it may be the last time playing hockey due to my collage not supporting a hockey leech. I would like to end off my year on a high note and play one last season and maybe the last time I'll play hockey. I am all in for any drastic measures we need to take to have a season. The final public comment is from Robert Stevenson, Southwick, Massachusetts. Good evening, school board members. I am sending in this comment to provide a different opinion to consider during your upcoming discussions on whether you will allow our student athletes to participate in the upcoming winter sports season. I was hopeful that the superintendent would keep an open mind prior to making her recommendation to the committee on this topic, but based on her statement last week at the school board meeting, she appears to have once again already made her mind up before hearing what information could be provided by the AD or principal of the school. Since her opinion is not based on any facts, just worries, I would hope that you will be open to taking a more objective view of the situation and not relying solely on her recommendation. The MIAA and the state of Massachusetts have invested thousands of dollars into making adjustments to methods of play and reviewing the latest clinical research that is available to determine if they are able to make a determination if student athletes of the state can participate safely in specific winter sports for this upcoming season. They have now completed that process, and they have made positive recommendations for several sports. They also made recommendations for sports that they did not feel were safe for them to participate at this time, as they did for wrestling. The only question that really needs to be answered by the AD is, do you believe that you are able to follow the guidelines that have been recommended by the MIAA? If he can reasonably assure that we can follow them, then we should let them play. We do not need to second-guess the MIAA. There have not been any significant reports of transmission of COVID from student to student across the nation, let alone transmission during sports. The schools and high school athletics are not causing super-spreading events. This worry about increasing the possible risk of teachers and students contracting the virus from student athletes being exposed during games was completely unfounded and has been proven to be false. I was informed recently by a school board member that under normal circumstances, the principal of the school and the AD are the ones that determine a school's ability to participate in sporting activities. Why have we not heard from Joe Terrell at all? He should be free to voice his opinion on this matter. Unfortunately, the superintendent has made this much more difficult for this to happen, as she has been crystal clear her opinion on this topic. Before the fall recommendation was made, I know from direct conversations that the principal and the AD were in support of the student athletes playing sports, but the school committee was not provided this information when the superintendent's original recommendation was formally presented. Why was that? Their opinions on this important matter were a casualty of her worries. These student athletes deserve a chance to be able to play the sports they all love. We need to trust the MIAA has the best interest of the schools and students in mind by recommending that these sports can be played safely. Don't overthink this. All the hard work has already been done. The AD and the coaches can follow the recommendations that have been established by the MIAA. The transmission rate has not been shown to be elevated. The parents and the community will make sure that the students are able to get to practices. Let them play.
That concludes public comment.
Okay, educational presentation, Superintendent Willard.
Yes, good evening, everybody. Good evening, members of the community, schoolteachers. I'm going to be making a presentation tonight regarding the memorandum of agreement that was recently passed by our teachers' union and our paraprofessionals' union. A lot of work went into crafting an agreement that we felt would be put in place that took the interests of the stakeholders, all stakeholders, the parents, the teachers, the students, and we melded it together to come up with a much more comprehensive measure around how and when our school or the district will close. So what we have come up with is, you're going to see it here, is the first thing that you will see is that we want to give our staff at least 48 hours notice of any transition. It goes for parents as well, to give you time to prepare. We don't want to have to tell you on a Thursday night that we will be closing on a Friday. That is to nobody's benefit. So we are going to be working to the best of our ability to give everybody a 48 hours notice of any transition. The second piece is really important. This is a big change from when we negotiated the original contract due to much greater use of metrics and a lot more available data. So in our previous agreement, we had that when Hampden County reached a 3% positivity rate, our schools would close, and it was just a blanket statement. So after reviewing and getting a lot of feedback, it was very important to a lot of our staff members that we did keep the positivity rate for Hampden County, as a lot of our teachers live in a lot of the surrounding communities. They have kids that go to the surrounding communities. We have a lot of school choice districts that we bring in kids from surrounding communities. So Hampden County positivity rate is still an important metric for us to look at. We did raise it from 3% to 5%, and that is one of the criteria that is going to be looked at. The second criteria that is going to be looked at is whether Southwick, Taland, or Granville turns red on the community-level COVID-19 data reporting map. It's the one that they publish on Fridays. We, Amy, will show it to you in a minute, and that would need to be read for two consecutive weeks. So Southwick, Taland, and Granville would need to be in the red for two consecutive weeks. Just to let you know, last week, the Hampden County positivity rate was 5.55%. Looking at the trends that are happening this week, I'm going to assume that Hampden County will still be above 5%. Southwick was in the red for the first time last week on Friday, and I have spoken with the public health nurse at length today. And with the current numbers that she is seeing in Southwick, she is anticipating that we are going to be well in the red category again. The third criteria is 1% or more of our in-person district hybrid students or staff are absent due to a positive COVID-19 test. Well, that criteria is not valid right now because we don't have any students in person or hybrid. They are all remote learning. So if you look at number three, we have to meet two of those three criteria in order to close the district. I can pretty much assure you that we will have met two, both A and B, criteria for keeping our school district in remote. But what we did do is we did listen, and we looked at number four, and we determined that if a school or a specialized program does not have any incidences of positive COVID-19 cases, and after consultation between, and I've listed everybody out, but we call it our safety committee that meets daily, weekly, it can be twice a day we could meet. If it is determined that it is safe to open up one of our schools or one of our specialized programs because we don't have any incidences of COVID-19, and even if two of the top three criteria are met, we would still be able to keep one of our schools, two of our schools, or some of our special programs in some of our schools open. Number five just states that nothing in this agreement prevents us from closing the school district if we deem it necessary. So even if that criteria is not met, if something happens and as a group we feel that it is of the best interest to close our school district, we will do that. And even more importantly is the definition of the term cluster. Unfortunately, Southwick Powder Mill School did have a cluster defined by the state, and these are the definitions that are defined by the state. So if a cluster is determined, it can mean that two or more students and staff within a classroom group developed COVID within 14 days, and their transmission exposure occurred in the classroom. It could be more than 3% of a cohort or grade, at least three individuals, developed COVID-19 within 14 days and transmission or exposure occurred in the school. C is more than 3% of the school developed COVID-19 within 14 days, and there is evidence of transmission within the school. Or D, three or more staff within the same school developed COVID-19 with 14 days, and there is evidence of transmission among the staff. So there is another cluster that is defined about riding a bus, but that would not have anything to do with a school closure. That would be a bus-related incident. So these are the four types of clusters that would help us either close down a classroom, have us close down a school, even if the other top criteria is not met. We feel that this agreement really addresses the needs of the, my priority, number one, the health and the safety of our students and our staff, making sure that when we do open our school doors, that it is safe and that we have everything in place to make sure that we can continue to learning, in-person learning in a safe environment. But, and as much as I believe that there is nothing that can replace in-person learning, and I think our teachers are the most amazing teachers that I've seen. I've seen them go above and beyond during the school closure, especially our teachers who have been in person all year, especially at Woodland in grades three, four, and some in five and six, who've just had to pivot completely to remote learning. I know that they're giving it their all and doing the best they can and miss their kids terribly. But I did have a lengthy discussion today with our public health nurse, and due to the Thanksgiving holiday coming up and due to reaching the two out of the three criteria, I just don't feel that this is the appropriate time to be reopening our schools for learning. I do not feel it is safe until we continue to look at the trends and patterns, and the trends and patterns that we're seeing right now is a sharp increase in COVID cases in our three communities. So I know that is not the news that I wanted to give you tonight. It is certainly not the news the parents want to hear. It is certainly not the news that our teachers want to hear, and it is certainly not the news that our students want to hear. But I still feel my top priority is the health and the safety of students and staff, and that is something that weighs on me heavily. It requires me to make very difficult decisions and putting what I want to the side and making a decision on what I feel is in the best interest of the safety and the health of our students and staff. So I am making the decision to stay in a remote status for next school week. We will be looking closely, as we have this week, at any school-aged children who are testing positive for COVID. And although it won't be a long turnaround time, we do anticipate on this Friday, a week from Friday, we will be sending out an update to say if we can open some classrooms the following Monday, December 7th, could we open some schools on December 7th? I don't have the answers for that now, but it will all be based on what we're seeing as data and trends develop across our district. And then no Thanksgiving is coming, and I know that we love our families and we want to be with our families, but I also know that the impact that this COVID spread is having on the education of our children. So I urge you to adhere to those safety guidelines, to adhere to mask-wearing, social distancing. It's gonna take our communities working together to reopen our school doors. And as the superintendent, I want our school doors open. I want our kids back. I want to hear them laugh. I want to see them learning. So that is my presentation, and if the school committee has any questions for me, I will be happy to answer them.
So this is Pam. I did have a couple of questions, if that's okay?
Sure.
So my first question is just, I think, my own ignorance on this. So I'm very familiar with how and where to find the color map for the different towns, but not so much on the Hampton County percent positivity testing.
Funny that you say that, Pam. These are going to be pulled up tonight so I can share with the community as well as the school committee where to find this.
Awesome.
So Amy already has them ready to be pulled up. So if you go to mass.gov and you click on the COVID-19 link, you will see COVID updates and information. And if you scroll down, you will see community-level data. Click on that button. And if you click on the top one, that will show you town by town color, and this is the one that says Thursday night. This is the one we look at on Friday to decide what's happening. And if you look at Granville is on here, Southwick is on here, and Taland is on here. Granville is still unshaded right there, but they're, their percent positive is 6.02. So that is something that we are looking at. Southwick, last week. We keep scrolling. I think it's on page 21, Amy. 21 Southwick, see how it coded into the red with a 5.67 positivity rate, which is higher than the Hampden County positivity rate right now. And then if you go to Taland, you will see that Taland has less than five. They're in the gray, but they did have one person test positive. And then if you go to Tallinn, you will see that Tallinn has less than five. They're in the gray, but they did have one person test positive. But I always say you've got to be careful with the percent positive because the smaller the population pool. It can kind of skew the percent positive. So that's why we really look at the colored metrics. And if you go back to that same page. And you scroll down just a little bit more, you will see county level positivity rates. And if you click on that, this comes out on Wednesday nights. It has all the counties listed and it has Hampden County at 5.55%. You'll see we are the second highest in the state, only behind Bristol County.
Thank you. I just never scrolled down that far to find that.
It is very, it's 97 pages. If you go on the first one that we went to, it's a lengthy document they put out on Friday.
Jen, this is John. In the, in the spirit of making this simpler, I would like to see. Us put this up on the, in a summarized version of, let's say, three columns of. You know, the three different things with the statistics of what they currently are so we could centralize that on our website so they didn't have to go dig through this.
Sure, we can absolutely do that. I just wanted to let people know that this is where we're getting the data.
Yeah, and we could absolutely, we should absolutely put the source right below that to say, here's the source link for this document. Here's the source link for this document, whatever. But just something that says, you know, hey, it's red, it's 3.7. These, you know, if we can update that weekly and put it out. On the website and probably on a Facebook posting, you know, some kind of graphic, just so that that's the easiest. Easiest way for them to get that information because I've had, I've dug for this too. And it's, it's, it's not. Impossible to get to, but it's, you know, it takes a few clicks and, you know, just in the spirit of making it easier.
But I can't find the map right now. The only place I can find the map is on a website in Boston. I don't know where they hid the map. So I do agree, it is very difficult to navigate.
Jen, I just had one other question. I know, yes, in this document, 3C, you said that obviously didn't apply right now because nobody has been in the buildings. My question is, if we were in the buildings. You know, if students were in-person and hybrid, based on the current numbers of cases that we are aware of. Would we have reached that 1% or more?
No. A lot of, I said last week, we had eight students at Southwick Regional School test positive. They were all remote students. So their numbers would not be factored in because they're not. They're not in, they're not an in-person or a hybrid student.
What, what is 1% of that, of that total? What's the total number?
So 1% is, I think we decided it was about 12 or 13. I can't remember off the top of my head. But I believe it was 12.
Okay.
Because we had to take out all of the students who were.
Yeah, remote.
Learning and we had to include the staff members and the pair of professionals and. I believe we came to 11, 11 or 12. I can definitely find out for you. I don't know right off the top of my head.
Any other questions for Superintendent Waller? Sorry, I cut somebody off who was trying to.
No, Jeff, it was just me saying I'm done.
I just wanted to thank the teachers and the pair of professionals for. Putting their trust and their faith in us that we're going to do the right thing for them and do the right thing for our students. And I think this MOA goes a long way to showing the trust that we have with each other and doing what's best for our community. I want to thank them.
Okay, if there isn't any more questions, we will move on. Policy, no policy. We're going to do second reading at our next regular scheduled meeting, which is next Tuesday. Action items.
Move to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Southwick-Tallinn-Granville Regional School District and the Southwick-Tallinn-Granville Education Association COVID-19 School-Bass District Closure Metric Version 2.0 Recommended.
A second.
Any questions on the MOA with the union?
I'm wondering if by chance we do consider having just the. A special program or an individual school stay open. I know that it's written that the chair will be involved, but if you, I would really appreciate if you could consult. All of us potentially before that discussion too. If possible. It just seems like it could be a sticky area depending on if it comes up.
So that conversation happens on noon on Fridays.
All right, just count me out. Just saying, it's a pretty important decision, so.
Very important decision.
Any other questions, concerns about the MOA? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Jeff is a yes. Motion passes 700.
Move to approve the establishment of athletics liaison as a position of the Southwick-Tallinn-Granville Regional School Committee Recommended.
So moved.
Wait here a second.
Did I, did my internet?
Think we so moved twice, do we?
I didn't hear Pam originally.
Did I? Yeah, my, I think my internet cut out. Did I miss a portion of it?
Second.
Okay, so on the floor right now, we have. The concept of having an athletics liaison to work between the board. And the principal of the regional school and the athletic director. To discuss athletics as a whole. This isn't just about COVID. This liaison position would continue beyond COVID. This is not the first time we've talked about the liaison position. Last year, we talked about adding an athletic liaison when there was discussion about. The new fundraising source at the, at the regional school for athletics and other things. So. If the will of the committee is to have a liaison, then we could vote this evening, create this liaison position. And there is a volunteer willing to do this. If the committee is interested in doing a sports subcommittee, then we could modify this action as well. So I'm leaving it up to the committee at this point and opening the floor to discussion and questions. No thoughts?
Pros and cons with regard to whether we go with a liaison or a committee?
I think, so I was able to, so it's sort of my volunteer to do this. And I think the liaison part of it makes more sense than a subcommittee. Because we don't really have, and I think it was, was you, Amy, that was talking about the difference between. You know, the, the actual decisions we have to make and sort of just being this sounding board between the two things. I think this fits that, that niche a little bit better than what. A subcommittee might be needed for as, as we have like, you know, a technology liaison and a health and wellness liaison like that.
So you will be, this is Maria. So your role will be to be in contact with the AD and the principal and to be the liaison?
Yeah, and actually, we had a conversation yesterday and I've, I've talked to Dave separately after it too. So just, just trying to. You know, help him form the, the, the right. Presentation to put together to make sure we have, we can present the information as he, as we have it. And, you know, that we can make a, a decision based on it. So trying to, trying to help him make sure that he gets the perspective of how I see the committee reacting to certain things.
So if you don't mind asking, me asking, what was the feedback from the AD? And that, in that, in that subject? Like you helping him with the presentation and all that?
Well, well, I mean, it's, it's, we really had a group discussion yesterday, so there was several of us. We met with the Board of Health and. And, and the AD was there and principal and superintendent were there. And it was just, you know, a general conversation about where we stand and what the MIA has put out. And I mean, he's, he's got to put together based on when we just got what the MIA's guidelines are for things. He's done some survey work for the parents, so just kind of put that all together into, you know, a presentation that's going to be presented, I believe, at the next meeting. And then we would vote on it in the subsequent meeting. So it's, it's not that. It's not that I would say he's recommending anything one way. He's just trying to put together with protocols that have been given. How or if or how or why or whatever you want to look at it, we could accomplish those things. So based on what the MIA has given us, how would we accomplish each one of those things? And we're trying to go into detail of saying, okay, if, you know, this sport happens, this is how the things would have to happen. So that, again, the, so that the board will have as much information as possible on how we would enact it. Whereas I think we had a little bit of a gap there before where we didn't have clear answers on everything.
Any other thoughts or comments?
So John, you're, you're volunteering for this. I thank you for volunteering.
Yeah, voluntold, volunteering, same thing. No, I, I, I'm happy to, I'm happy to try to, to help and, you know, it's, it's. It's a very difficult situation. We talked, I think, for over two hours yesterday. Back and forth of different complications. So I want certainly the public to understand too that. These decisions aren't made lightly and that there is a ton of thought that goes into them. And it's really, it's really, really difficult.
I think the liaison will provide, even in the future, the flexibility we need to make sure that meetings can happen quickly or as frequently as they need. As opposed to a committee where it takes forever to figure out who's available when and that kind of thing. So thinking forward seems like a great plan.
Yeah, this was the chairman's suggestion, and I think this is, strikes the right balance between what we've been asked and what, what would be the most effective.
All right, if there's no more discussion, we can move on this action. We'll do a roll call vote. We will start with Pam.
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes. Motion passes 700. Thank you, Jonathan, for stepping up on this. Okay, moving on to reports, Superintendent Waller?
Hi, I'm going to have Amy pull up the COVID numbers because when I read them out loud, it's kind of difficult for people to. See them. I just want to let people know that these are posted every Wednesday on our website. You can go to our COVID page and I think it's the top button on the right that says current COVID data. And as you can see, it has the data from up to 11/13. On what COVID looks like in our school district. So last week was a tough week for our school district. This week, we have had three positive cases already in two days. I will continue to send out notifications just to keep you, make you aware of them and what school communities that they're in. Although we don't have to worry about close contacts in the school right now because we are in remote. I'd rather be transparent and let you know. And to have you ever feel like that, we are not sharing with you the information that's happening in your community.
Any questions on the COVID data? Any questions for Superintendent Waller?
I do want to just share one thing, just to let everybody know. We did have that cluster that we spoke about and we brought the mobile testing unit to Southwick. Test the students and the staff that were in that classroom. Actually, there were two classrooms and multiple staff members. And all of the tests that we have received to date have come out negative. So I do want to share that as well.
Thank you. Steve is off this evening, so no report from the Director of Finance and Operations. Okay, so can we use something there? This time, it's time for our second public comment. Amy, if you would be so kind to check the superintendent email address.
Okay, I have two public comments. The first one is Sarah Pizzarka from Westfield, Mass. She states, I feels the duty of the Southwick School Community to turn the lights back on for sports. My sophomore son Ryder and eighth grade daughter Kayla have been playing travel club baseball and soccer since June. Playing kids from all over New England with the strictest of rules and safety measures for preventing COVID. That's in addition to three to four practices a week with their teams and coaches. It is the duty of the superintendent and school committee to turn sports back on for these kids. There are no ways to do this safely. There, I'm sorry, there are ways to do this safely, but you need to begin to reach out to us. The parents who have witnessed it and living in the sport environment since June, instead of hiding behind your fear of turning them back on. Be brave, have courage, do what is right by the school community and ask for help in developing protocol to help turn sports on safely. Ask us, parents that have been on the sidelines watching our kids play safely and following the strictest of protocol. It can be done. It should be done. These kids need sports. It can be done safely. You're putting so many kids at risk by keeping the lights off on sports. Do what is right for these kids. Turn sports on. Better yet, ask those of us that have seen it being done safely instead of hiding behind your fears. And the next public comment is from Robert Stevenson, Southwick, Massachusetts. Good evening, school board members. I appreciate all the hard work that went into crafting this renegotiated MOA so we can potentially get our kids back in school. There is certainly much more detail concerning the criteria that needs to happen that would cause us to. To go change our learning system. After all of that hard work, the one question I have is that why is there no detailed criteria that indicates when we are allowed to return to class? How can you spend all of that time renegotiating and not having a detailed re-engagement plan? Is this left up to the opinion of the superintendent? These additional details should have been laid out in the MOA. This is a major oversight that leaves this up to interpretation. I wouldn't pat yourselves on the back for getting this contract renegotiated at this point either. Our children have been out of school for weeks due to your failure in addressing these issues earlier. Your explanation as to why this wasn't addressed in a timely manner was insufficient. You all dropped the ball from the school board to the superintendent and our children have had to pay the price. Then to go through this renegotiation and leave out a detailed re-entry plan is very disappointing. And that concludes public comment for this evening.
Amy? Okay, moving on to committee discussion. Any old business? Any new business?
When is our next meeting?
Next Tuesday.
All right.
Before I entertain a motion to adjourn, I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. I hope everybody is safe, gets to spend some time with their family. And we'll get back at this next Tuesday night. With that, I'll entertain motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A second.
Okay, do a roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes. Good evening, everybody.